Schedule Board of Selectmen. One day, October second, twenty twenty-three to order. Uh, first order of business is pledge allegiance, Charles, would you?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Charles. We've got a couple of things to add here. Um. Uh, one of them is an application to place a sign on the green, the Shoreline Chamber of Commerce. Uh, so we'll put that as six dot four, is there a motion? I'll move it. Thank you. Uh, let me try your mind, Second Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
I have motion. Also, um, I received a packet, uh, when I got in this morning, it was probably waiting for me on Friday, but I wasn't here. Um, Chief, uh, Chief Massey and I think Deputy Chief, uh, Sal Nessie is on here, probably, uh, helping here, is, uh, correspondence asking for us to approve a new server for the Police Department. Is there a motion to add this?
Some movement.
Second. Let me try your mind, Second Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries, we'll make that, uh, for, uh, for that.
Hey, Matt, before we get too much further, don't, uh, you had mentioned I have to log out at nine twenty-five.
Okay.
Into a court Zoom at nine thirty.
We'll, we'll do our best, Charles and I were talking earlier, he said this agenda looks like it's pretty quick, but we have a tendency sometimes to make those.
Never say that.
They could be the most treacherous ones, but I'd no disrespect to the community here, as I log off at nine twenty-five.
Got it, you've got it.
I got a letter from a Guilford resident, uh, questioning the, uh, uh, propriety of a street name, so I can just bring it up under correspondence?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. All right, uh, public forum, anyone wishing to address the board in public forum? There were none, so we move on to, uh, minutes, uh, three, approve the minutes, September eighteen, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting, is there a motion? Oh, and a second?
Second.
Comments, questions, suggested change?
I have one request or clarification, really.
What do you got?
It's medical, um, there's a lot of discussion about stop loss, and the last line says stop loss payments are estimated at one seventeen a month. That is a little bit ambiguous, I'm, I'm pretty sure that means that's our premium projected going forward, as opposed to actually receiving?
Yes, that's the premium cost, and I think, as I recall, um, we have not yet been billed by that carrier. Um, and so if you straight line the, uh, anticipated, um, not, yeah, anticipated cost for, uh, stop loss over the twelve-month period, it's about a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars.
Sure, so I would just sort of suggest the minutes might reflect that stop loss premiums are estimated at one seventeen a month.
That sounds like a motion, huh?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Um, look at, on that addition, uh, let me try your mind, Second Federici.
Aye.
Uh, those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, and now as to the larger, uh, total, total, uh, minutes, any further? Uh, okay, uh, is there a motion to approve in your entirety?
Some moved.
Second.
Second, uh, any further discussion, comments? Here, now let me try your mind, Second Federici.
Aye.
Now, those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. It is. Item four, Parks and Recreation Director, Rick Meenerd. Rick? Okay, Aaron Er, T.
Morning.
As she's better known to some of us, used to watch her and coach her play basketball. Many years ago, well, not that many for her, more for me.
She can still dunk, too. Well, thank you, congratulations, Matt, on the big weekend you had.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Uh, so, uh, I have brought Karen because she, uh, runs the, uh, oversees the ski trips, parks and ski trips, and how many kids we have totally signed up?
So we'll take fifty from each school, fifty from Adams and fifty from Baldwin.
Wow.
Yeah, and it fills up quick.
All right, we're going to Mount Suddington, and so, uh, she reached out and got three quotes, Daco, uh, eight thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars, Peter Pan, fourteen thousand four hundred, and, uh, they requested a quote from Thermo King, but there was no quote, so they're actually just, we've been working with Daco for a number of years, um, and they've been very, very pleased with, uh, the quality of their, you know, their always have a time and safety record and all that, and so let's just continue with it and build, buy those trips for the kids.
Great.
Is it a hundred kids total?
Yeah, a hundred kids total, the bus is fit fifty-four on them, but there's space for the chaperones, yep. But it fills up, uh, very quick, so they'll register through us for transportation and then they go directly through Mount Suddington for their ski passes.
You hit a key word when you just said safety, thinking about that horrible bus accident that just happened in New York State, and so I, I don't know what to ask you to do, but I guess I just would mention it, you know? Um, I just ask Daco how their tires are or whatever.
Yeah.
I never heard the final thing on that one, whether it was a bad tire or something else, but I don't, I mean, it's easy for me to say, but I, I just think it's something we should just mention to them, that's, or whoever gets the bid.
Yeah, absolutely.
So are these kids, the trips during the daytime, or are these evening trips?
Evening, so they'll go four Tuesdays for the month of January, so they pick them up right from school, so three o'clock, and then they bring them back here by nine o'clock.
Great.
So the cost is for four round trips, two buses?
Yep, yeah, total clock.
Excellent. Uh, how is this compared to previous years?
They've only, I, compared to last year, I want to say it was only a couple hundred, um, in- increase in the price from last year. Um, we use them over the summer, they're very reliable, the drivers are great, um, but yeah, compared to last year, there wasn't a, a jump in price, Peter Pan compared to last year, they were way, yeah.
And the kids have to pay too, right? I mean, this isn't free.
No, yeah, so they'll pay for transportation, will make a charge, and then they go directly through Mount Suddington, which is a group rate that we get, um, you know, for what pass they want, they want just a lift ticket or lessons or rentals, things like that, but it's.
Looks like it's about ten dollars, uh, ten dollars a kid, fifteen.
Exactly, yeah, we keep it very reasonable.
That goes to the program.
Yep.
Hmm.
Well, I have a very serious question. Do you need chaperones?
Yeah.
I have new skis and boots that are only a couple of years old.
I know, Erica's just asking that, I was like, the teachers are great, they love to do it.
Anyway, anything further? If not, if, is there a motion to approve the awarding of the contract for the, uh, ski trips to Daco? Uh, anticipated for, uh, round trip tickets, total cost of eighty-nine, uh, hundred and twenty dollars.
I will make that motion.
And a second?
Second.
Let me try your mind, Second Federici. And I know you could probably be a chaperone too, you've got a, you've got, you've got working gear.
I dropped my skis off at Action Sports yesterday for the tune-up.
Good, all right, let me try your minds, all in favor? Aye, Second Federici?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, T.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you, knowing you, this hustle and bustle of your busy day, we appreciate your.
Oh.
We're gonna skate out of.
Thank you, guys.
Nice to meet you.
He was working on that one.
The, uh, all morning long. You needed, needed a second, a couple of clock, you could come up with that one. All right, all right, the, uh, other item we added, um, is four dot A, uh, the board, the, uh, Police Commission, Police Department is looking for a new computer server at the Police Department, current server is reaching the end of its service life, and funding for this purchase was approved in the capital budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Purchase of a Dell Power Edge R seven fifty server would be made off of NCPA contract number, yeah, that C lot of zeros, five, six, zero, zero from Dell Technologies for the price of fourteen thousand, seven hundred and six dollars and forty-six cents. The server is a critical component of the Police Department for the purpose of hosting files, programs, including virtual machines necessary for the successful operation of a modern Police Department, and, uh, Chief Massey respectfully requests our approval of this capital expenditure today, and Deputy Chief, Sal Nessie's here, Sal, anything you'd like to add?
Oh, good morning, Matt, good morning, uh, all the leadership team members, happy Monday. Uh, no, I, uh, you summed it up quite nicely, we, uh, we do have a server that's reaching, uh, end of life. Um, as you mentioned, the funding was approved in capital budget FY twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, Jay Leatherman has conducted the research on this, uh, he's, uh, done all the work as far as the specs are concerned, he feels that this particular server will, uh, meet our needs for, uh, quite some time. Uh, total purchase is fourteen thousand, seven hundred and six dollars, forty-six cents. It is off of National Cooperative Purchasing, Purchasing Alliance contract pricing. So we are respected, respectfully requesting, uh, approval to move forward and, uh, receive the funding for this project.
Right, any, any questions, comments? Uh, Sal, do you happen to know how old the current server is?
Uh, I don't know what the current age of the server is, uh, I'm sorry?
Oh, no, that was just, uh, someone was in the Selectmen's Office, asking a question.
Yeah, I'm not sure what current age is, but, uh, Jay did, uh, provide us an email which did indicate that the current server we have is, uh, getting to, uh, the point where it has to be replaced, and, uh, that it would not be, uh, feasible to operate without, uh, replacing it.
Yeah, uh, end of service life, usually, uh, as I recall from my days in the technology business, was, uh, somewhere around five to seven years. So, uh, my assumption is that's probably the age of that, uh, that device. And end of service life means basically that no one can come out and work on it if it fails.
Yep.
Or support for it, it fails, and they can come out and do the work, but, uh, you can't get the, uh, the coverage on it, so. Anything, uh, any other further questions? Nope, all right, uh, is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
A second?
Second.
All right, let me try your mind, Second Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, have a great day, everybody.
You too. Bye-bye. Right, we are back on to. All right, appointments and resignations, um, and I think, uh, let me, I might as well go by the order here instead of on my paper, right? Um, six dot one, um, there with me, is act on a recommendation to appoint Peter Sharland to the Shellfish Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-seven, is there a motion?
I'd like to move that.
Is there, uh, is there a second?
Second.
Second, um, actually, I saw Peter this, uh, this weekend. This is current, I think, Commodore, President of, uh, the Yaku, he was very gracious helping us facilitate that event. Anyway, uh, let me try your mind, Second Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Um, item, uh, six dot two, act on a recommendation to appoint Chris Robinson as an alternate to the Golf Course Committee to fill a vacancy for a term to expire September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, Lou?
I would like to make that motion.
I'll second it, uh.
I, I have a question, the, the recommendation that's attached in Board Pack, I think, is the wrong one, it's the other gentleman's application. So can you, I assume that Mr. Robinson was recommended by the government?
He was.
Yes, because I'm on the nominee.
Okay, thank you, was present for that, okay, I just assumed that, all right, great, thank you.
And Chris, uh, owing to his, uh, newfound hobby, uh, from his previous hobby where he was in boating, he was on the Marina Commission, he resigned from Marina Commission, but, uh, I'd say he's, what'd you say, Lou?
As focused as anybody on the game.
We'd, addicted. All right, let me try your mind, Second Federici?
Aye.
Uh, those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries.
And I was just gonna mention on the Peter Sharland, nothing critical, just that he came through the independent party, but he, he's listed as unaffiliated.
That's fine.
So, oh, yeah, right, just.
Van majority rule is still, uh,
Right.
Still in force, right. Okay, six, uh, well, it's actually, I have seven on our electronic agenda, um, seven dot one, um, act on a request for the Guilford Interfaith Volunteers to place a sign on the green advertising its lasagna dinner taking place November tenth, twenty twenty-three, sign placement, uh, ten twenty-two uh, through eleven, uh, zero motion?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
Second, uh, let me try your minds. Uh, order, are there any questions or comments on it? Let me try your minds, Second Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Um, I have been invited to that, uh, dinner and will be attending, but I traditionally like to serve as opposed to, uh, participate, I'm asked to say a couple of words. I don't normally have the dinner, uh, I'd like to serve, so if anybody else wants to come to that and, and help serve, they're more than welcome to.
Yeah, schedule permitting, Matt, I'll, I'll, I'll try to join you as well, of course.
Great. All right, uh, seven dot two, uh, act on a request for the Shoreline Chamber of Commerce, uh, to place a sign on the green advertising its fall festival, uh, at the Guilford Fairgrounds taking place October fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, sign placement ten two to ten fourteen, is there a motion?
Some moved.
Second, any comments or questions? Here are none, let me try your mind, Second Federici?
Aye.
Uh, those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries, you know, missing. Seven to three, act on a request from the Guilford Community Fund to place its annual fundraising campaign sign on the southwest corner of the green, is there a motion? A second?
Second.
Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and Second Federici is also aye, great. Um, okay, six dot four, another request from the, uh, Shoreline Chamber, uh, to place a sign on the green, um, related to their health, wellness, and, uh, aging well open house, uh, date of the activity event is November fourth, twenty twenty-three, is there a motion?
I'll move it.
A second?
Second.
Uh, try your mind. No, this was a little, just.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, let me, uh, try your mind, Second Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Uh, committee reports, anything, any updates?
Um, yeah, we had, uh, we had a very, um, good, um, affordable housing, affordable housing committee, AKA Housing for Economic Development Plan, and the, um, Executive Director from Neighbor Works came, Tom Cruess, and in person, and, um, talked to us about, um, issues that we have with the five-hundred-foot flood, flood, flood plain rule from deep versus the one-hundred-foot flood plain rule from deep, and how we can, uh, mitigate that, and, um, it's, it's I don't think it's gonna cause the project to fail, but, um, it, it's, it's gonna require probably more money from somebody to, for the fix, which is either gonna be, um, fill or reciting the, um, buildings, um, I, I, I don't, I don't, I mean, it's not a secret, I'm not trying to say that, but I don't want to be saying things that I don't understand.
Yeah, they may have to reorient the buildings in order to.
Right, so there's a number of things that, but we are, um, help, we, the committee is pressing the developer to, um, get this resolved, so that we know what our problems are and what we might need to ask from either the state or the town or the developer or whatever, and, uh, go forward from there, so. So that's a little disappointing, but, um, at, at least we now have, we're getting to some concrete, uh, um, we just kept hearing flood plain, flood plain, and, and finally I said, wait a minute, what, you know, what, what exactly, what the heck is happening? So, so we're on, you know.
What, what is it now, it's a difference between one hundred and five hundred?
Yes, and I guess.
That's a big difference.
Yes. Um, the, the building has to be at five hundred.
Well, they can, they can actually fill, they can actually do the fill, it's gonna cost them somewhere between a half and three-quarters of a million dollars, turns out, fill one truck in every two.
Five hundred feet?
No, five hundred year.
I'm sorry.
There are two different, there are two different flood planes.
This is why I have to be careful.
One is the hundred-year storm and the other is the five-hundred.
It's not five hundred feet, I'm sorry, see?
And by the way, who was recording floods five hundred years ago?
Well, nowadays, gotta be careful.
Right.
So at, at some point earlier in the process, should this have come out?
We asked that question, yes, we asked that question, and it was, uh.
Not to, not to denigrate, uh, the, uh, the architectural firm, but I think they were more focused on the, uh, architectural aspects as opposed to the site, uh, development, the site development aspects of it, uh, and I'm not sure that they had, had fully engaged, uh, an engineering firm, uh, but so one hundred versus five hundred year is really what, uh, made the change, because they, they were aware and were in compliance for the hundred-year flood.
Right.
Uh, but.
That's an example of my constant struggles with experts.
Yeah, yeah, and, and the frustration of serving as an appoint, I assume, as serving in an appointed capacity on something like this. Yeah.
And relying on experts.
Yeah.
Right, that, that was, I, I said, that's what I finally said rather strongly the other night, because I said, we, you know, we are depending on you to tell us what is going on.
Yeah.
But finally, I kind of had to be the one who said, what's going on here, you know, so it kind of.
Well, the worst part is we pay them for their opinion.
Yes.
Expertise. And, you know, yeah, okay.
Well, in this case, these are, this is the development, the developer.
Yeah.
Who's paying the cost for, uh, paying the freight for their engineers on this, uh, but I, I will also, I'd like to point out is that Janice plays the account, identified this as, or is a potential issue some time ago, uh, and forced the issue.
It's something that our committee didn't realize, we, we are going, going forward, we're, we're putting Janice on the committee as a town advisor. You know, I, I thought it was coming all through the town planner, which it is, but it's essential that we have Janice now as part of the group, so, and we have our new town planner, who I, I feel is, um, on, on top of this as much as she possibly can be, given that she's only been here for a month, and, um, our committee members are a little, um, fired up, so.
But, you know, I, this one, I don't want to get into the technicalities, you know, that's what your committee's doing and everything, but this example and other examples where we pay experts for their opinion, we make decisions, both we as a town and the state make decisions, financial decisions based on their expertise. You know, is it there, or is there any in- insurance that they have or anything for errors and admissions?
I don't know, Charles, but I think going forward with projects through this committee, we are, will become a little smarter ourselves on what we ask.
I understand that, but at some point in time, I, I really think that some of these folks, you know, ought to be held accountable, I mean, they are gonna cost us time and money, and, you know, they just merely go on creating their next phase.
Yeah.
I mean, they're probably gonna charge us for redoing it to the five-hundred-year thing now, I mean.
Well, the good, the good news is we're not on the hook for any.
I know we're not, but I, it just, you know, and.
Yeah, and, and again, I think this, this may largely be an interpretation of the, the DEP regs that was, uh, inappropriately evaluated. Uh, and, and I think that is, that is gonna be the essential line, and the question is, does a developer want to go after their, um, engineering firm?
Right.
Um, which is always, always a challenge, because you're working with that company, and you want to, you know, have them check their EVO, uh, policy, but um, I, granted, I was, uh, familiar with, um, a situation related to sixty-six High Street, where the developer went after the, uh, uh, the engineering firm for exactly that, after their EVO stuff, because they had, there were flaws in the design, it had to be rectified, so. I think, I think, you know, it probably, Charles, is, is, is more prevalent, Lou may be able to talk to this, in the private sector than it is in the public sector, uh, where those kind of, uh, those kind of claims and counterclaims, uh, are made more frequently.
Um, that was most of the business of the meeting, we did, we, we are continuing to work through with, uh, Peter Barrett and Matt, and ultimately this body about whether our committee becomes a commission, you know, that's.
It will, it's, I, it is, it will.
And then the, uh, other, um, thing, the other, uh, topic that was brought up with the whole zoning rewrite, uh, creating, um, a housing, a portable housing trust fund, and who manages that, and the logistics of that, so. No, those aren't as pressing, they're important, but they're not as pressing, but we really are back to focusing on this Woodruff thing to have something happen. So that's all I know. Our next meeting is October seventeenth, which I asked to have it put on your calendar, but I guess it's gonna be a, a, a sustainable Connecticut event in Windsor.
Yes, a very, a very good sustainable event, which is, we're, to be, we have been designated climate leader. I don't get mistaken, one of, one of very few communities that, um, have.
Maybe, maybe we should try to change our housing.
I would, that would be preferable. Possible, because I've been, uh, myself and Terry Kane and some members of the Sustainable Task Force are gonna be up at this, at the event, receiving the award, so, um, if we can change it, that would be.
Okay.
Speaking of that, I don't want to stretch me out, but the, uh, I, I noticed there's been a little run of conversations about food waste and everything.
Yeah.
And, uh, I gotta say, I've been using the, the one at the transfer station, and I compost at home, so I, I didn't think it was going to be that, uh, uh, that useful to me personally, or to my family personally, but it is, because there's remarkable numbers of things, uh, you know, that you don't compost, you know? Bones, things like that and everything, and, uh, it's very convenient at the transfer station, you don't have to take it out of its containers and stuff like that. Leave it in the freezer, and, you know, once a week, a month, or whenever you go, just take the whole container, drop it, and, uh, it's very convenient, and I, you know, as somebody that composts, you know, I, I end up using monthly, I mean, it's right.
Well, you and I are like, uh, I was there, I think it was last, was it Thursday, one of the days off prior to the, the, uh, weekend's activities, and dumping my, uh, collections, collectibles off, because the unfortunate part is the trial that we were participating, and I think you may have seen this in some of the articles. Uh, one of the two haulers decided not to participate after the fact, or, you know, after they had committed to it, we had started the program, so I feel as if we've, uh, let down a good portion of the community, uh, and hopefully they understand that this really was, that this was not the fault of the program. But the program has an opportunity to, this pilot has an opportunity to inform us, and one of the things I think that we've already understood is we had an idea through the consultants who have been hired by DEP, as well as South Central Regional Council of Governments, on how to do this, it's one thing to be West Haven, and you have, you pass an ordinance to say, that's where it's gonna be, because they provide municipal waste services. We don't, this is a private hauler-based, uh, uh, collection system primarily, uh, the estimates are somewhere around seventy percent of this, it's, um, used private haulers to, to, to take care of their garbage, so trying to shoehorn and fit this program into the existing hauler business model, which, which would be changing routes or building specific routes just to collect this kind of waste, um, is turning out to, is turning out to be a, a challenge, so I did, I actually had, I had made a presentation two weeks ago, I think, uh, on a DEP solid waste, uh, um, they, they their solid waste management, uh, commission, committee, um, to a, a bunch of folks, talking about that, we need to be careful about how we, the assumptions we make with the programs that we put together and then try to, you know, shoehorn it into a business model that doesn't, doesn't work that way, so. So we're, uh, we, we modified the program, unfortunately, the Guilford, uh, mostly, uh, the, the residents, all the residents were from one hauler, uh, but there were more of those in Guilford than there were in Madison, uh, Schweitzer's were more prevalent, uh, collector in Madison, and Basugos was, uh, the, the predominant collector here, so. Disappointing to say the least, but, uh, I made the switch, instead of my garbage, I've got a five-gallon bucket, I keep, uh, I keep that with my trash, uh, with a closed lid. That's one of the challenges with this program, Charles has probably talked about.
I was surprised, they say they're not having a problem with the transfer station, and I, I guess the, the hauler is, I mean, there's no odor, or, you know, it's working, I, uh, pleasantly surprised.
The odor is in your whole bucket you're collecting where you're collecting.
No. Yeah. Not to pile on on this, but I, I can, I take the, uh, three-pound coffee containers that we have here at, at work, and are the plastic containers, which have a pretty tightly sealed lid, put all the grounds in there, eggshells, whatever comes off, uh, you know, the peelings. It, is it a little smelly when you open it occasionally, but it's closed ninety-nine percent of the time, not a problem. And the bottom line is you can just take that and dump it right in those bins that are right adjacent to the recycling, which we go to every week anyway.
Yeah.
It really works, and they're, 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 as Charles says, they're clean, they're available, it's easy, you're already, you're already there a lot of times anyway. It's not, it's, it's working fine, it's great.
Yeah, and talking to the, the, the people over there, it is getting used, I, I thought it wouldn't get used, so it would end up being the same thing, it wouldn't work, but it, it, it's getting used and, uh.
Of course. I, 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 based on the response we got, uh, from the community in terms of participation, there's demand out there for the service, so. And we're gonna continue our, we'll have to, we'll work with Madison on the continuation of the program at the Waste Transfer Station, because at some point the grant funds will expire, uh, and then we'll move forward, uh, now, this is all tied into, you know, there are, we've had some discussions about, you know, pay as you throw, uh, you know, you buy the bags, you're, you're actually buying the bags, and you know, you don't have to do the tipping fee, there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a bunch of, of, of different variations on these programs around, uh, not only the state but nation, nationwide.
You're down about the pickup.
Yeah. So. Thanks for bringing that up, Charles.
You had more Guilford citizens that wanted to participate in the grant program than you could. You know, more Guilford citizens that wanted to participate in the grant program than you could accommodate, right? I think I remember you telling us that.
Sandy, did you mention your letter?
Not yet.
Okay.
Oh, I think correspondents didn't come up yet, right?
Oh, sorry.
I'm about to.
Not that I'm trying to rush things.
Okay.
Yes, you are. Um, so the, I will, just one other quick update on the, uh, other affordable housing project. Now, we talked about Sawmill. And I think I mentioned to you that I've been approached by senior, senior folks at the Department of Housing, uh, to, um. Uh, to, to decline the receipt of the CBG funds because. DOH has earmarked state bonding funds that they would like to use, uh, they would give to us. So they could use those CBG funds elsewhere to complete projects that are short funded. Uh, I will have, uh, not had a chance to sit with the commissioner and the deputies, the gentleman, gentleman I've been working with. But I will at eleven o'clock today have an opportunity to talk to the commissioner. And it turns out this was the commissioner's idea to make this swap. She will be here at, uh, at the green, uh, the, uh, Great Hill, uh, cottage. Cottages for another riving cutting, uh, so they're getting pretty close to, uh, those units getting ready for folks to inhabit, so. Uh, so I'll hopefully have a, uh, on that.
That would be great.
Okay, correspondence?
Okay, well, I got a short letter from Sarah Prowne who lives in Guilford and I'll, I'll just read you the letter because it's easier than, um. Hi Sandy, who is responsible for road names in Guilford? I was in a meeting at work where it was shared that Guilford still has a road called Squaw Drive. The USGS has recently completed a major renaming project for renaming sixty, six hundred and fifty place names. That use the derogatory term squaw, including the formerly named Squaw Rocks off the coast of Guilford. Following an order from the Department of Interior and then she sent me a whole link about that. Is there a process to nominate streets to be renamed? Is this a local process? Can Guilford stop carrying this derogatory? And offensive name on its roads? Thank you for your advice, Sarah. And I just said I would bring it forward to this group.
Thanks for, thanks for bringing that up. We've had, uh, and I know Pete's on, on the call at this point. We've had some discussions. There's been some other inquiries along those lines and it's not just Squaw, Satcham's Head. Uh, is another one, uh, there are probably a couple of these. Um, the, uh, the, the, the. Current ordinance, Pete, on, uh, on, on road naming is, is, I think it falls to the Board of Selectment. Uh, through, I'd recommendation of the town engineer traditionally, um, but. The, the law of unintended consequences is something that we need to consider here, um, and that is. Everyone on Squaw Lane will be, will be required to refile, um, uh, their, their, uh. Their, their mortgages, their liens, their averages, there will be, there will be costs. Um, that will be borne by those who are actually on Squaw Lane, so. I'm assuming this woman lives on Squaw Lane?
No, she lives on Colonial Road.
Right, well, that's pretty convenient to be able to point to somebody else's, uh, street. And say, you have to change your street and then suffer the, uh, the, not suffer, but to go through it and, and, you know, accept the consequences of doing so. So, uh, we've actually had some conversations, uh, Pete, uh, myself and, and Janice about that process. And some of the things that we've talked about are requiring a two-thirds vote of the folks who are affected, uh, because. You know, people's lives will be affected, uh, as a result of this, um, you know. All the property records that downstairs in the town clerk's office, all the, all the arrangements with mortgages and everything.
Social Security?
In context, that's huge, thanks.
That's right. So Pete, you want to make any other questions first?
Well, if, if there was a road name that was just overtly horrific, we would change it probably. So, I don't know, we draw the line there.
Yeah, exactly. Pete, did I, did I, uh, speak out of turn or misspeak?
Surprisingly, no. No.
It's good coaching from you.
Um, yeah, Matt and I, you know, we did spend some time on this and, and Karen, uh, who I think is also on. Did a lot of research for us on this as well and. Uh, this had come up through the, um. Human Rights Commission as well, um, so. What we found though is these street naming hasn't happened very often or renaming. Um, but it's happened through Planning and Zoning Commission. It's happened through the Board of Selectment and in one case it happened through a town meeting. So we don't have a very specific procedure for that. One of the things, uh, Matt and I talked about, um, would be, and sometimes have done this, whether to pass an ordinance. As to how we'll go, how to go about it. But, you know, it's, it's a huge step and, uh. Something we could talk about for sure, policy call for you folks. Um, and I, I think that's, I think we reached out Connecticut Conference on Municipalities too at the time, but. Yeah, there's not a real, um. A clean process, so we could talk about that if you like. Or I can do a memo to the board or something on that.
Yeah, I think a memo would be great, Pete, just summarizing it.
Good, why don't I do that?
So just to answer, um, our towns person. Should I just say, just report what, what went on at this meeting and say that you're working on a memo to further?
Yeah, Pete's going to clarify the, the, A, the process by which it's done. And then, um, a recommendation as to how we should proceed to codify how these things are done because it seems as if. We don't have a standard way of doing that, so the ordinance would most likely be it. Uh, and you can also say that, uh, there are concerns that the board has for those who are impacted.
Right.
By the, uh, the change of the name.
Right.
Which, some of which are not inconsequential. That's how, that give you enough? Good. Thanks, Pete. Anything else on the correspondence? No, hearing none. Uh, old business? Anybody got old business? New business? Nope. Great. Politor? Nope. Okay, that's going to bring us to, um. Item twelve or thirteen, whatever it is, uh, discussed to take possible action on potential legal settlement. An executive session will be required. Pete Barrett will be, uh, joining us on that. Uh, so, uh, is there a motion going to executive session?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Let me try your minds. Second Federici?
Aye.
Uh, those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Uh, thank you all, uh, for your participation. We'll be coming back, uh, out of executive session at some point, uh. Probably before the twenty after. And, uh, Chief Massey and where is Pete? I think he's probably going to walk in here if I'm not mistaken.
He's on the way.
He's, he's coming in. Tim, I'd ask if you, uh, uh, signed off. That would be helpful, uh, second. Uh, let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, uh, during executive session, there were no motions made, no actions taken. But as a result of the discussion regarding, uh, pending litigation, uh, and the terms discussed, uh. Is there a motion to, uh, accept to see the, the current settlement, uh, figure that is on the table?
So moved.
Second.
Anything further? Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you. There being nothing else for us to consider? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
In a second, there we go. Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Pretty good.